Had a shortfall. Well, a lot of the local funds were things like our cafeteria. You know, because of the free lunch program. We typically budget for $500,000 of revenue that comes on in every year. But because we didn't do à la carte and students all got free lunches, that's something that we're going to have to take into account, you know, as we move forward. But that's a 500,000, you know, half a million dollars, a lot of money for local revenue. And that's one of the justifications for the shortfall. The other is the interest rates. It's hard to plan a year in advance where the interest rates are going to be. But if you take a look, we had about $219,000 in interest and we made that was budgeted. And we made under $10,000 of interest. There's certain things that are just outside of our control. But as we budget for the next fiscal year, we're going to have to take those things into account. And I'll sit down with the finance committee and kind of give you my thoughts. And my strategy is, is I always try to keep it as normal as you can. Don't chase, because then when you chase, you lose your sight picture on that from year into year out. I can justify, you know, the cafe, we had that shortfall. Well, that's about what we bring in every year in a normal market. So anyway, I think it tells us the story a little bit better than if we don't chase.
Do we know if the lunch programs are going to go back to normal? Or has that been decided yet?
So I've been working with Laura on that. It's going to be kind of a hybrid. So if everything returns to normal, they're still on the, oh gosh, there's a new acronym for it. The seamless summer option has been extended to, you like that, SSO? Has been extended all the way through June of '22. So what does that mean? That means all of our students that come in are qualified for a free breakfast and a free lunch. But that is the reimbursable meal. And if you've been around high school students, they just don't like the reimbursable meal. They like the à la carte items and they like some of the other things. That is not, some of those things are not part of the reimbursable meal. So if a student wants to choose to have those items for lunch, then we'll revert back to. So I think we're going to be in some sort of hybrid next year. We're going to have quite a few kids that take advantage of the seamless summer option. And then we'll have some kids that will, you know, if you want to buy a second lunch, and we have some kids that buy two entrees, well, that second entree will be a charged meal. So we will start seeing some of the revenue come back. Very good question. Anything else?
But they will be eating in the cafeteria.
That is our plan, Gloria, is to get back to a normal plan and having our normal lunch periods and...
Information that can be filled in. So as we went through last school year, we obviously knew that remediation was going to have to be a different, because we did have a much different situation in how we were teaching students. So in January, once we were able to get the finalized first semester grades, we actually put together a team of teachers, the counselors were involved. Our MTSS coordinator, which we, Kim Stafford, as well as our intervention coordinator, Becky Drum, Dr. Freeman and I, as well as Holly Davis, met and we really discussed pulling this data together and tracking the data. So we tracked first semester and then we wanted to wait until really midterm of second semester to track again, because those are the only times that you get definitive data points within a semester, so that we could look to see where our students were and, you know, sort of where we were going. So we started identifying and brainstorming some different things we could do and actually started implementing second semester immediately, different interventions. In February, we met with the department chairs. And at that time, we told them that we really need to be looking towards that future of identifying what are the gaps? If any, that we were not able to really develop the student skills and help them to master the skills they needed to move to the next level. So the department started having those conversations. And that's actually a huge focus of what they'll be doing next school year during late start time. So that was the process that we started in January and February. Joe, if you could.
Sorry about that.
No, you're fine. You're fine. During second semester, then, we wanted to immediately put in some supports. And this is actually, some of this had actually started in first semester already. One of the things that we did with the study lab time and the peer tutoring time, we had students that were struggling. Either they were coming in in the morning and they weren't here in the afternoon and they were struggling. So if they were able to find some transportation, they were able to get here. They actually worked through our MTSS coordinator. They would come in and they would be in the study lab where they would get some additional support. Sometimes it would be a remote student that in working with the parent, they would come in for two to three weeks. We would help them get organized, because a lot of it is just executive functioning skill. A lot of it is just, how do I study? How do I organize? How do I use my time? And we found that in some cases, that really helped. In others, we needed to continue to have them come longer than the two to three periods. So at that point, then, we began to offer more support in that semester. The edgenuity, edgenuity, actually, one of the reasons that we switched to edgenuity from our previous is that our teachers can actually go in and build the content. So it's just this database of all of these units. So we said, okay, in Algebra I, what do we teach? And then our math teachers then met and they built the Algebra I curriculum. So those are typically anywhere from probably four to six units, probably including a final exam. And so it's a full semester of remediation. We really love edgenuity for that reason. The other thing we found with edgenuity, we've been using it for several years. There's actually video that the students watch, they take notes. There's really wonderful annotation skill or tools on there for them. And a lot of supports for students who are struggling. They watch that, they practice, they take quizzes, exams, et cetera. And that's in a supportive environment. So during the regular school year, they do that during their peer tutoring time. So they're actually in the study lab where our peer tutor coordinators help them and keep them sort of focused and on track as well. And our MTSS coordinator, Kim Stafford, continues to track them as well. We found that our math labs really put us in a great...
Use of data in here, so thank you very much, because I like data. And, you know, I just had a thought from writing lab, because I know like at ICC, there used to be a writing, reading lab and so on. And then they kind of phased that out. But they do have a tutoring lab and a writing lab. And I mean, you guys have a very strong English program here and the whole, you know, TQAR, whatever it's called.
Oh, the TICA?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, I know. It looks like TQAR. I know.
I just, I see it and I don't know.
Yeah.
But it's really across the board.
It is.
Everybody gets it. So it seems like it's the kind of thing, and I'm outside my lane here, but it seems like it's the kind of thing where you could almost have a student tutoring lab, because the older students can definitely tutor that down.
We do. That's in the peer tutoring lab? That's what we do.
It's great.
Yes. So that's, our study lab is both a study lab with the coordinators, but it's also a peer tutoring lab. We actually train our tutors. We have our tutors in all of our packs, the freshman packs, as well as our upperclassman pack plus. We have them also available upstairs. We implemented a year or two ago where the coordinators are in contact with the teachers. So when we know it's term paper time, we're actually posting things downstairs. We're going down to study hall saying, hey, we know it's term paper time, we are happy to help. So we've been doing a lot with study lab for that. So when we think about math lab, math lab is really remediation. So a writing lab as an optional lab to help with writing is one thing. Math lab is more of a remediation lab. So those are two sort of different things. And that's where we're trying to figure out kind of what that would look like. So we're having a lot of conversations.
Because math is concrete.
It is.
And writing is not.
Exactly.
Huge difference. Yeah.
Yeah. So that's why we're trying to figure out, you know, there's definitely been a lot of conversation about a writing lab or an English lab. We're doing that through the peer tutoring if it is somebody to just look at your papers and to help you with your papers. But if we're talking about failures and remediation, which I will tell you, in the typical year, we have never had an issue with that in English. We're able to remediate and keep everybody on track. So lots of conversation, we just don't have the answers yet.
One more thing, you said when, as you guys were looking at some of the folks that were having on remediation or thinking of a potential remediation, you said that they struggled with executive planning.
Executive functioning skills?
Is that, how do we get that to more, how do we train people up on that?
Well, so we do as much as we can, just, that's part of what our teachers embed. And a lot of that also comes hand in hand. We have a program called Project CRIS that all of our teachers are trained on, which is also about really developing students' executive skills, making them very aware of how they learn and really implementing that as part of what we teach and part of our curriculum. Because you can always teach it in isolation. Here's how to take notes. But it's really hard sometimes to get them to do it in practice. So we have embedded that within our curriculum and what we teach. And so that is part of what we do. Beyond that, that's a strong emphasis in our packs, in particular our pack plus. It would not be unusual for you to walk into a pack plus on a Monday and have a teacher say, okay, come over, bring me your backpack. And we pull everything out of the backpack from the week before that's a complete mess. And we reorganize it and we talk about how to organize it and those sorts of things. So we find that that's more of something that you have to organically do than something that you can say, hey, everybody sit down and let's tell you how to manage your time.
Kind of a two-part one. So one of the big things with COVID is lessons learned, right? And one of the things that came out of it is the homeroom. So I had a question one was right. I was going to ask you how you guys are going to implement homeroom. And then the second part of it is, are there any other lessons learned? And I'm thinking especially with remediation on the summer. And maybe it's too early for lessons learned. But it seems like there's some cool things that you guys did over the summer that made our, you know, any ideas on things carrying forward?
So first, homeroom, which I apologize, you know, when you're talking and you just don't want to stare at it and talk to people and read it, I miss it. So we actually have been working with the union. We've had two meetings and have really had a lot of conversations about homeroom. So actually, homeroom information is going out to the staff tomorrow. And we'll be implementing a homeroom that will be at the end of the day. Homeroom is really going to be a place where we're going to have a couple of days designated where students can go to teachers, reaching out to get help. We will also be able to do some of our all-school initiatives, which college and career readiness is actually one of our initiatives that we want to implement more of. And so there will be, you know, some of that as well. So during that homeroom time, then, that's also a place for us to touch base. Now, the largest majority of our students don't need a pack or a pack plus. They're successful in a study hall. So we're not going to replicate that pack where they're going to get a sit-down every single week, where somebody looks at their grades and says, okay, let's go talk to your teacher. That's happening in our packs and our pack plus. But our homeroom is a good place to touch base. Okay, you guys struggling, what's coming up? How can we help you? Really great conversation building. We can say, hey, you know, you guys are both have the same test. Maybe tomorrow you can sit in homeroom and come up with a plan to study together. You know, those sorts of things are going to be happening in the homeroom. So we're still in the process of working through what homeroom will look like. We have to be very aware that we have such, we really have a very developed system of RTI, or we call it MTSS. So it's a multi-tiered support system. So we want to make sure that we're in support and working in tandem and we're not just redundant replicating something we're already doing. So those are conversations that are still ongoing. But we're going to have at least two designated days where teachers will be able, or students will be able to go to teachers and get help. We're going to be doing the initiative, the all-school initiatives through those. And sometimes, you know, we may have some activity-based activities that we're going to be doing, some community building, definitely relationship building, and really helping students as they sort of walk through this, particularly this next year. Some of them haven't walked in the door yet, because as freshmen, they were remote for an entire year. So there's going to be a lot of that, just simple acclimation. In terms of summer school, we did learn a lot of lessons in summer school. It was a mixed bag. We had some that were very, very successful. We had some that were not. Where we typically find that in our past experience, the way we did it, we were almost 100% successful at all times, because we had a smaller environment. Because when we do a summer school, you may sit with, let's say that Beth taught for years. She might have 12 kids that are remediating math and they may be remediating six different classes. Somebody might have Algebra I first semester, somebody else has second semester, Practical Geometry, Geometry, and any combination. And so she's able to sort of work with them. When we were having 20 kids in a classroom, our teachers found that it was harder to get that one-on-one support that we would normally give. So that was a little bit of a tough component to it. So we just finished on Friday. I've gotten far enough to color code who passed, who didn't, who stayed, who dropped, that sort of thing. I just haven't done the data for it yet. So I'm interested to see what that is going to be. But yeah, we definitely will have to look at the summer school program. There were some that were very successful. There were some that were very not successful. And bringing them in for summer school didn't do them any good. So we have to really look at that before we make any decisions for the future.
For those who have not been here for an entire year, I know you do freshman orientation. You can have a second orientation for those who have not been here.
It's funny, we actually had a conversation about, I keep looking at Beth, because we just talked about this. Yeah, we've had a second, we've had a conversation about something like that. We actually are going to be looking at implementing something that would be more like, we already do what we call Wash U, which is our teacher academy for extra professional development and, you know, kind of a deeper dive. We're looking to develop something like that for parents. That would be like a parent academy that they could, you know, virtually participate in, that maybe members of the math department will be on, talking about, okay, math, here's, you know, kind of how we do things. So we are looking at that. And we did kick around, please Kyle, I haven't had a chance to talk to you about this. We have kicked around the idea of possibly doing another orientation.
Yeah, it sounds like it.
Yeah, we would like to do that. It's just, what would that look like in having those conversations? So, yeah, very beginning stages. It's fine. We've talked about these things, but we're not there yet.
Will be interesting too, to see the students coming in as freshmen this year. Because I know, just as we work to keep school open, so that the grade schools, but it was a different year.
It was.
And a little bit, I know, I've been in '52 for years working in RTI. But I don't know a lot about their scores. I know the yearbook star tests. But I don't think there's a lot of test data to come from those. So we have to kind of pick up and just analyze very carefully where they are.
Yeah, our focus is really going to be on identifying where they're at, some pre-assessment, and then how can we accelerate them to where they're supposed to be and move forward to continue to be successful. I will say largely, we've had all of our departments do an internal audit. Largely, our departments feel as though they were able to hit the skills that they wanted to hit, maybe not with the depth that they would like to. So that's the conversation. It'll be a huge focus that our departments will have this next year.
Anybody else? Well, this has been really informative. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, very.
All right, Dr. Freeman, planning for 2021/22 school year, which I believe is mostly just how we're going to respond to the new COVID information.
So Friday afternoon around 2 o'clock. Well, earlier in the day, CDC had put out new guidance for school districts. And around 2 o'clock, we received information from the IDPH and ISPE that they're fully implementing the CDC guidelines. Having said that, they've added new guidance as of today and plan on giving us new guidance again on Wednesday. So just hold on, we'll have more information as it goes. But I will say, based on what we're seeing from their guidance, I don't see anything in there that would obstruct a standard seven-period day at this point. So I think our plan to go seven periods is still the direction we're going to be. Right now, the big discussion that seems to be going around is how to handle masking. In other words, the IDPH, CDC, they're stating if you're fully vaccinated, you no longer need to wear a mask. Hence, by the way, as you can see at the table, you don't have to wear a mask if you're fully vaccinated. So that's a plus. I do see that as a good thing. The question is, what is that going to look like as we get into a school environment where not everybody is fully vaccinated? And what will we be able to do as we move forward? So there's still a lot of questions that are out there tied to spacing, contact tracing, feeding in the cafeteria. Spacing right now, the general discussion is three feet. But they have to change one thing with contact tracing to make sure that three feet still fits. Because if you remember, the, near the end of the year last, actually, at the very beginning of the year last year, the guidance came out from IDPH stating, yes, you can have people sitting within three feet of each other within a school environment. However, if any of those people within three feet of each other are COVID positive, then everybody around them will be quarantined for at least 10 days. Well, that's on 14 days. Then they reiterated that again in March, making everybody believe it was new guidance. It was not new guidance. It had been there the whole time. They didn't change anything about the six-feet quarantine protocol, which is we stay the length of it. So we're just trying to get to the bottom of what all of this means. Hopefully, we have some good answers on Wednesday. But I think we're starting to get to a place where we'll have a good feel for it. The short version is, it really does look like we're not going to have any problems opening the doors in August to seven-period day, feeding kids at school, going back to what we would say is a normal experience. The question will be tied to what we do on these.
Will we have to check as they move on with the cafeteria?
Still working on that too. So there is, there is a language within that guidance that talks about thorough screening process. We're trying to figure out what that means. So believe it or not, what they released was about a three-page document. What I saw was, I've never seen anything from ISPE that's three pages. So where's my 50-page craziness? So we'll see that soon. And we'll be able to get to it and figure out what it is exactly. But short version of this, we're still working on it and hope to have some answers soon. As you know, just tied to the events that we've been through over the past week. Friday was not a good day. So we, I started working with a few people on some things. I'm talking to super, I talked to a few superintendents today. And hopefully, as the week goes on, I'll be able to provide more information that's where we're able to fill in some of the gaps.
Are there some of the very tight restrictions they had on cleansing, cleaning everything?
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up. Surface cleaning, they have kind of gone back to an old-school approach where, you know, if you have an issue within your school, you probably need to clean things at least thoroughly once a day. Which, they kind of talked about that a little bit last year. As the, as the, our understanding of COVID-19 went on, we began to realize that hard surface contact was not spreading the disease. That was, became one more evidence. And then they had the scientific backing to prove that. So as far as some of the surface cleaning, yes, not. Hand sanitizer, hand washing, hygiene cleaning, they're still very specific on that. You do need to be, yes. And honestly, it's just good hygiene practice. So that's a plus. I think I prefer, you know, when I'm shaking somebody's hand to know that that hand's fairly clean. So that's good. And I think those are the things we just need to be aware of those reasons for.
Well, Karen's asking that I'm sure a lot of these questions will help you a lot if we get information soon that we can share. So everybody can know what all these stories put together.
Absolutely. So we are getting there. Under other, I'll talk a little bit more about some of the other things that are going to cause us to shift overs a little bit from that for this week.
All right, we're good. Moving on to 6.3, proposed athletic handbook changes for 2021/22 school year.
Okay, if you look, there is one note in there you may want to take a look at. It is the revision noted. The change that needs to be made in the handbook is on page 13. Mathletes was removed and chess was added. Other than that, it's just dates, if any.
Good, thank you. 6.4, Miller-Holm and Triggs LLC rate adjustment.
This is an annual thing. Miller-Holm and Triggs, they will send us an update if they need to change their rates. As you see, they are changing. And they just laid out on the sheet what it will be. Miller-Holm and Triggs has been an excellent firm for us and has provided a lot of great guidance and information over the years.
Thank you. And 6.5, HVAC update, Dr. Sanders.
This is how I'll press. This is what I love about doing work with MEP. If you've been reading in the updates that Paul and I have been sending out, they're doing observation reports. And so they knew we had a board meeting coming up. And so they put this together and got it to me today. And so I'm sharing it with you. I'm not going to go into the details that's for you to get into. But as far as the Ashbrook Building, most of the work has eaten, most of the demolition and, you know, ductwork is in place. They've got the Aon unit that's set. And if you drive around to the backside of the Ashbrook Building, you can see that out there on that large concrete pad. And so they're making good progress. And they should be on schedule to have most of the completion done by August 13th. The main boiler room, they're also on schedule. Now, we were anticipating with the boiler room, it wasn't as time-sensitive because it's focusing in on the heat. And so they'll have most of that work done by October 1st. If you flip to the backside, we're about 35% of the way done as far as the contractor payouts. You can see where the additional change orders and RFPs have come in there. And then that last little blurb in there, I think I put that in one of the updates. It's hard to remember what gets put in there. But the company that we hired a number of years ago to do the electronic controls, ECSI, who've been a great partner with us, they submitted an AMR incentive rebate. And so it's looking like the district will get $1,100,000 back from AMR for the work on this project. And so, you know, that helps cover some of the change orders and, you know, that went in to only make this project even better. That's why we love ECSI as a business partner for that.
I can't remember, Joe, was this part of our life-saving synergy or did it separate?
Some of the things are part of that.
That's what I was thinking.
So for example, in the Ashbrook Building, we had, we had a bunch of outlets that were violations. So they're going in and they're going to clean up some of those things. So yes, a lot of the HVAC work was things that had been identified that needed attention. So like the boilers, you know, they were 1999-era boilers. They're getting replaced over the phase projects. One other thing to throw out there, I did meet with Ryan Holmes last Friday about preliminary discussions for Phase 2. And so his task is to put together kind of a schedule that we can bring to the facilities committee and then to the finance committee. And so we're looking, if you recall, the four-phase project, Phase 2, was close to the same ballpark cost expense that this Phase 1 would be. So about three-quarters of a million dollars. But then it moves us into getting into the horseshoe portion. So we still have a lot of classrooms that are on the 100-ton chiller. And so that would be taking that down systematically and taking on more rooftop units instead of adding all the pure classrooms. That 100-ton chiller goes down, we lose a lot of classrooms as far as heating and energy. So, and it's also the conversion from the steam heat to the hot water heat. So, which is much more efficient. I will be bringing that to the next facilities committee and the next finance committee that we'll probably have here before the end of July. And I can give you a detailed plan as to what that looks like.
Good, thank you. Director, transportation job description.
Yes, as you know, we're converting over to a new director of transportation. With that, we need a job description for that position. This is the job description. So hopefully, everybody's had a chance to look through it. And if you have not, just take a look. We have about one before you need to approve it.
I don't know if you noticed the old job description. It was so bad, I couldn't even do the redline on it, because I would have had to redline everything on it.
It was very, this one's very detailed. Yes.
It's a growing thing. You know, for years, we had bus drivers. And as you know, we're running eight routes now. There's so much plane that goes into that, just... There's so much planning that goes into just route planning for that many drivers, that many routes. We just don't say no very well to new activities. And so we start looking through all the extracurricular activities. This job has, has grown well beyond a head bus driver. Not to say anything about Kurt Nelson, he did a fantastic job for a lot of years, but this, this is more in line with what we're going to expect the transportation director.
And with that, we'll be at some point bringing the contract because it will increase number of days, the position will change a little bit, we need to go somewhere. So we're working on that, we're actually working on it today.
So it looks like you took the type 75 off, which I think makes sense. But I was curious why the master's degree? Because it seems like a person who's got, I mean, it's mainly logistics skills. It seems like you might, I understand that somebody with a master's is going to be better suited, probably, I mean, they're going to be more likely to have that, right? But it seems like you might be, and I know this, the person that we're going to be filling this, no problem, but just I'm thinking down the road. You could have a person with strong logistics background who doesn't have a.
And that's, if I, if I use this line from the military, anything that's waferable, the big thing was stepping away from the type 75. That is, that was a thing of the past when a lot of, I'm going to tell you, a lot of athletic directors wore two hats. They were the athletic director and then they were also the transportation director because they had to schedule so many. And so that's why there was a type 75 requirement. But we have other directors that aren't type 75. If, if we want to consider doing that, I think if, if future boards, if we got into a hiring and we had the best game of it and they didn't have it, I wouldn't see that as a roadblock. I think that would be definitely something that would be waferable. But we, we do like, you know, a lot of districts have, you know, some continuing education just for the fact that I, I think what it does is it gives you a, a good pool, you know, people that, that have gone above and beyond. It's a, it's a high-level position. I'd say there's, there's a lot of stress with that because you got, you got a lot of moving parts trying to get planned and that. So, and we could go either way.
And tied to, I think some of the reason we talked about leaving the masters in is you're looking at somebody who's going to work with parents and having that background and training to be an agent. You can have someone who's worked at a trucking company and logistics for years and that looks different than working with parents in a, in a school system for us. So I think that's kind of where I thought was at the time we just wanted to be, had that, that type of leadership training to be able to work more directly with our clientele. But, you know, as you mentioned, it's something that we've, we've wavered stuff like that in the past. And if we find that, if we had the position reopened and we needed to find a candidate, it may be something where we have to peel it off. So that's all possible.
I was curious.
Yeah, it's a good question. It's very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Oh, okay, very good. And I believe you have another item.
Yeah, I, last night, we had our memorial service for our three students and our parent who passed away. We had a very good turnout. I'd say, I would, I would say, just guessing, looking at the gym, probably around 1,000 people, you know? And the kids had come to me on Friday and asked if they could put this together and they had a very specific way they wanted it done. And we honored their request, we kind of followed their, and it turned out very nice. I've had the opportunity to talk to all three families today, all very appreciative of the fact that we were able to open our facilities to them. And I don't know if everybody is aware of this, so not only did you have the service in the gym, but we barked into the NPR, Brickhouse had donated, yeah, they donated food and beverages. So you, you had the opportunity to get a pork sandwich, you could sit in and have a drink, step out of the way because it was very emotional. Lutheran Services and, forgive me if I don't give the full name of the group, but one of our local pastors, even Tom, had reached out to us and they brought five service dogs. They were also available in the NPR and as, they were busy.
It's one of the, yeah.
They were very busy. So at the end of the night, as we talked through it with the kids, you know, we talked about a balloon release, which was just a way of kind of letting go. We had talked about doing that at sunset, so 8:29 was the official time for sunset last night. That's when we had it out, that's when the release was going to happen. It, it was a little overcast, you know, the sky was not a happy sky, but it was still the point. And it was a really nice way to kind of end things. So I knew there were a large number of kids who hadn't had an opportunity to get up and sign memory books. So I think I, I was able to move the last students out of here about 10:25, 10:30. I think I got home at 35 minutes in. Our kids are hurting. You know, we have three families that are suffering immensely right now and it's been a tough week. Now, I've talked to all three families about, once they make arrangements, do they want us to send that out? All three do. So once I have that concrete, we'll put another communication out to our parents that here are the arrangements, here are the answers, everything you need to know.
It was incredibly thin and the compassion that the students showed for each other has brought tears to my eyes. Now, originally, it was a senior class, right? It was origing this, but I noticed that Steve's article mentioned a junior who's in charge of it. So was it a combination?
It was, it was almost all seniors. Yeah, but there were, you know how kids are. It's, it was a friend. Just so you know, the 20 kids that came to me with me, the majority of them were seniors. And the reason I put members of the senior class was because that was the majority. You know, I wasn't trying to leave anybody out and nobody was looking for any.
Well, as Steve said, the maturity to get up and talk and eat tears was incredible.
It was amazing. We have a, I'm kind of tied to that particular group of kids because I have one of them. And that is a very intelligent, very driven, very compassionate group of young men and women. So they did a very job.
And it, it spoke, I think, to the environment that we have here at the high school, that so many kids were comfortable getting up there and signing. There were just a lot of kids that spoke. And you just don't see that very much.
I discovered another element of this that I was very impressed by. And what is prayers that come from the community were incredible. We picked up on these for Washington, Washington, High Washington, Texas. We had a lot of, of the donations, comments on Facebook that they were thinking about Washington and that.
You know, the beauty of the education community is this. I sat down at my desk Friday morning and I had 25 emails and/or text messages from superintendents from all over the state. Just asking how we're doing, if we needed anything, just telling us and their prayers and their support for our community and our kids was there. It's what I love about our profession, it's a compassionate profession.
Yes. To kind of put you back on that, obviously, board has done it as a board because we want to be very careful what we did and that is appropriate. So I brought a sympathy card today to this school and simply asked Kyle if it would be appropriate, in his view, for us to attend sympathy cards with all the students, school board members to each family. And just as a contact from us to them. Obviously, right now, it's these kids at one of our own edge, but I think the parents might appreciate that if we're adults. And so I brought the cards tonight and if you would just sign each of them and then I'll catch Jennifer and Julie, so we got all the board members signature on it and we'll send them to the, on the addresses and we'll send them to the board yesterday.
I said, dear board, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, very good. And I guess I should just say, the administrators, thank you very much for bringing the kids in and working with the kids. You know, just had a great job, so thank you. All right, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Good. Any questions? All right, Seaman Dunn, ready for roll call.
Kopinski?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Knox Singer?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Kopinski?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Kopinski?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Kopinski?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Knox Singer?
Yes.
Kopinski?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Knox Singer?
Yes.
Kopinski?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Kopinski?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Knox Singer?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Kopinski?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Eight point, that passes 5-0. Eight point 128, approved employment of Philip Almond, science teacher, entertain motion.
So moved.
I can talk about it a little bit, actually. This one dropped into our laps. He is very qualified. It worked out very well for us. Filled every single gap that we were looking for. And I can't take much credit for it because I happened to be in Chautauqua, Wisconsin at the time. So Mrs. Stevens and Dr. Singer did the interviewing and they were very impressed. I got a call one night while I was sitting on the dapper in my hands trying to figure out why Fish won't bite me into my life. But, by the way, it's hard to be too upset in Chautauqua. You're just floating on a boat lots of the time. But they were very, they were very pleased and it wasn't easy to make a way to move. So thank you both for your work on that.
It's not hard, it's hard to fill.
Yes, yes.
Especially this late in the day.
Uh-huh.
Yes.
And has that master's degree?
Yes.
It's important in that.
Yep.
Very good. Roll call, please.
Knox Singer?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Kopinski?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Eight point, that passes 5-0. Eight point 12B, approved employment of Brian DeSutter, part-time employee.
So, another position that we have open is for a part-time business teacher. Now, we have not been able to find somebody certified in that area, so we're using the unique approach to this. Mr. DeSutter is a certified teacher. He will be team teaching with a couple of our business teachers to provide this course. That way, we are perfectly liable in the world of certification, but it gives us the extra body that we need to ensure that what we need to cover in OTT is covered. So he's been a teacher before and we don't want to do it again. And our plan is, by the way, we're going to reopen again probably around October, November to see if we can find a graduate to serve with.
Was he one of our permanent subs or something?
He was one of our permanent subs.
I thought it might be.
And our teaching staff had a lot of great things to say about our cadre of, of preferred subs. They, they just did an outstanding job, so. Now, granted, our preferred subs were pretty well-known by our teachers to begin with.
Pretty good teachers.
Yeah.
All right, very good. Thank you. And I would approve, entertaining motion to approve.
So moved.
And roll call, under it.
McNabb?
Yes.
Kopinski?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Knox Singer?
Yes.
Passes 5-0. Eight point 13, extracurricular employment. We're going to package these two together. Eight point 13A, approved employment of Chad Clifford, print shop co-sponsor. Eight point 13B, approved employment of Margaret Kutschen, print shop co-sponsor. Entertained motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, with Kurt Nelson's retirement, he used to run the print shop for us. As the last couple of years have gone on, we have leaned on Mr. Clifford and Mrs. Kutschen more and more to kind of help with certain things. The certificates we give out of recognition to our students who achieve that the board puts together that we sign off, they print those out so they have some good experience in those. We have them doing other jobs here and there. So it seemed like a pretty natural progression to move to these two. They asked if they could work together on it so that the weight of the print shop wasn't on one person. It's, it's a good combination, I think, to work out where they want. Dr. Sanders, you allowed a head work on that? Is there anything you want to throw in?
Just with HVAC, we're looking at utilizing one of the loft areas in the Ashbrook Building. If anybody would want to come up and take a tour and take a look at the construction that's going on, we're going to use, use that area for print shop. And we've got some great, the tour teachers have a lot of great ideas. Everything from going digital, like show bills and programs for like our plays and musicals. It seems to be the trend with the QRF codes and that. You get really tight quality. And it's still presenting, you know, actual hard copies, but that's going to be reduced. So we're excited, excited to see what they can do.
I think it's really cool that the art teachers are going to do it. I mean, it's just so in wheelhouse and it gives that practical aspect to art now. You know, you're always, as a teacher, you're always looking for real-life applications. This is it. That's great. So, we're ready, roll call.
Seaman?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Knox Singer?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Kopinski?
Yes.
Passes 5-0, very much. Eight point 2, blast from the past here, approved contract with Joseph, who's a little psychologist. He's back.
Long history.
Yes, entertained motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay, so Joe actually has been serving as a contract employee for the district since the time he retired. And so that's how we're bringing him back on. We're going to contract for specific number of days, very similar to the way we work with Andrew Rafferty. It'll be, we pay him for the days he works. And you have a copy of his contract there. As you know, we've had that psychologist position open for a while. We've had one for the township open for a couple of years that hasn't been filled. And we had, the township psychologist decided to take another position near the end of the year. So we are tabling together what we can to provide. It's not really tabling, Joe's been doing this for a long time. He's an excellent school psychologist. I know that our kids are going to get great services through the township. This is a township decision, but the high school board is still the hiring agent. So even though there are now two districts in the township, 50 and 308, that's who he'll be working with. And probably mostly the district 50 psychologists tend to work more at the elementary level than they do at the high school level. That's just the reality.
Which is kind of sad, I mean, to have to say.
Well, I think what it is, is it's really tied to the testing and the background work that goes into IAP. I know when you think psychologist, you often think in, in the office with the couch and how do you feel about that? That's not what educational psychologists do. They do a tremendous amount of testing that goes into determining whether or not students qualify for IAPs. That's really the lion's share of their work. So it's, it's, it looks different than it sounds. It's a... It's, it, it sounds like we're hiring somebody that's a mental health professional that's going to really work with mental health issues with our students. Though they can, that's not what most of them are doing. Just for the. Yes, yes.
All right, very good. Roll call, please.
Fisher?
Yes.
Knopf singer?
Yes.
McNutt?
Yes.
Kopinski?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Passes five oh. Eight point three, adopt resolution, approved resolution to adopt the regulatory basis of accounting, something we do every year. Entertaining motion to approve.
So moved.
This one falls into Dr. Sanders' wheelhouse. Anything you want to really say about that?
No, sir. Roll call, please.
Kopinski?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Knopf singer?
Yes.
McNutt?
Yes.
And our last item for tonight before close is eight point four, approved band trips. We saw these both last month, so we're just going to, all right, entertaining motion. So moved. Any questions? I think they're the same as they were.
Yes.
Yep, roll call, please.
Seaman? Yes. Fisher?
Yes.
Knopf singer?
Yes.
McNutt?
Yes.
Very much, passes five oh. I would entertain a motion to move into executive session. Or is that right?
Yes.
So moved.
Knopf singer?
Yes.
McNutt?
Yes.
Kopinski?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
And just for the record, when we come back, we will have one, two, three action items. All right, thank you, everybody, for coming.